Hello?
Uh, hey, this is Chris.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, for some reason, I'm not getting any signal through the Zoom meeting. I don't hear any volume.
All right.
But it's okay.
We'll just stay on the phone.
Okay.
We'll just stay on the phone.
Great.
Okay.
All right, very good. Okay, uh, Marsha, anything else, then?
Hey, this is Chris.
Uh, there was, I'm trying to type out the agenda.
Yeah, I for some reason I'm not getting any signal through the Zoom meeting. I don't hear any volume.
It's the, uh, uh, thank you.
All right.
But it's okay.
We'll just stay on the phone.
Okay.
We'll just stay on the phone.
Great.
So I think this didn't require us an action, but just when I think it's been a while, we
All right, very good. Okay, Marsha, anything else, then?
know, uh, uh, that is that we got from Etna. Uh, there was, I'm trying to type out the agenda.
Yes.
Okay, so that went into the pension fund. It's the, uh, uh, thank you. Uh.
Can you just explain that briefly, the way you just made?
So I think this didn't require us an action, but just when I think it's been a while, we know, uh, Uh, yeah, so back in the day before we had the DB plan, the town purchased, uh, that is that we got from Etna.
Yes.
Okay, so that went into the pension fund. uh.
Annuities.
Annuities, thank you, for people's retirement.
You just explain that briefly the way you just made.
And so those, there weren't a whole lot of them, but, uh, when we split off, when we, Uh, yeah, so back in the day before we had the DB plan, the town purchased, uh, uh, back in 2010, I think it was, and set up a separate, uh, advisor and separated everything,
Annuities.
Annuities, thank you, for people's retirement. basically, so that the custodian with our provides and everything was all very conglomerated And so those, there weren't a whole lot of them, but, uh, when we split off, when we, before, we separated it all out. At that point, we had to take the annuity piece and pay Etna for the future contributions uh, back in 2010, I think it was, and set up a separate advisor and separated everything, from the town, because those can't be cashed out right now. basically, so that the custodian with our provides and everything was all very conglomerated So at that time, we paid Etna, it's either $400,000 or $450,000. before, we separated it all out. So that's sitting on the side in Etna. At that point, we had to take the annuity piece and pay Etna for the future contributions And then the last three years, um, they've been required to send a credit check because from the town, because those can't be cashed out right now. the the amount that they have in that fund exceeds what they need after they have their So at that time, we paid Etna either $400,000 or $450,000. actuarial, um, valuation done. So that's sitting on the side in Etna. Um, so far, um, I think it was about $30,000, $30,000 in the previous year, but we're just And then the last three years, um, they've been required to send a credit check because going to bog back into the pension fund. the the amount that they have in that fund exceeds what they need after they have their
She's saying it's every every five years?
No.
Are you doing it?
Yeah, every year. actuarial, um, valuation done.
Every year.
I didn't get anything before three years ago, and now you've got one each, so I have Um, so far, um, I think it was about $30,000 in the previous year, but we're just going three years now.
So that $400,000 will sit there to fund the annuities that are needed, and they're finding out that they didn't need that amount of money.
to bog back into the pension fund.
Probably.
Done well.
Sure.
She's saying it's every every five years? Oh, yeah. Yeah, they're not working. What employees do we still have?
No.
Are you doing it?
Every year. Uh.
Every year.
I didn't get anything before three years ago, and now you've got one each, so I have
You know, they can't get funded, their retirement's funded, as he can do it.
three years now.
So that $400,000 will sit there to fund the annuities that are needed, and they're
They start, uh, Etna starts with, with, with all of that up, and it's written out,
finding out that they didn't need that amount of money.
February 11, maybe.
Probably.
They keep sending us that. Done well. Okay, and we're actually paying some of them already, aren't we? Sure. Oh, yeah. Yeah, they're not working. What employees do we still have?
I think probably all of them. Uh.
Oh, well, yeah, okay.
They're, they're pretty.
You know, they can't get funded, their retirement's funded, as he can do it.
Sure, when do we start the pension plan? The DB plan? Just early 2000s? They start, uh, Etna started with, with all of that up, and it's written out, February
Yeah.
Yeah, so they would all be retired by now.
Well, that's the real, the president of, of.
11, maybe.
They keep sending us that. Okay, and we're actually paying some of them already, aren't we? Okay, which gives you a better handle on it, because you actually know exactly who
I think probably all of them.
you're paying and what you're paying. Oh, well, yeah, okay.
They're, they're pretty. Sure, when do we start the pension plan?
So when that transition occurred, they had the option of staying with annuities?
The DB plan? Just early 2000s?
Yeah.
Yeah, so they would all be retired by now. No, no, they had no option. They had.
Well, that's the real, the president of, of. So if they, if those people now retire, they get something from the annuity and from? Okay, which gives you a better handle on it, because you actually know exactly who
No, they were not in the DB plan, I know.
you're paying and what you're paying. Oh, they were not. Well, they were still employees at the time you did the transition. So when that transition occurred, they had the option of staying with annuities?
Right, but because they couldn't, because they had to stick with the annuity, the town No, no, they had no option. They had. just left that.
So if they, if those people now retire, they get something from the annuity and from? So all those that were here, okay, all those that weren't in annuities at the time just stayed in that annuity, and that's why we had to fund it.
No, they were not in the DB plan, I know.
Oh, they were not. And then from that point forward, it was all there, the fine benefit. Well, they were still employees at the time you did the transition.
Right, but because they couldn't, because they had to stick with the annuity, the town
Very good. Anything else, Marsha?
No.
Okay. All right, uh, we have no old business, so we will get to the first item.
just left that.
So all those that were here, okay, all those that weren't in annuities at the time just stayed in that annuity, and that's why we had to fund it. No, I'm sorry, we have two items where we get to take care of those. And then from that point forward, it was all there, the fine benefit. I'll make a motion to a quarterly hours quarter, the number is either invoice 609-2101, the Very good. amount of $45,667 for the annual consulting fee. Anything else, Marsha?
No.
Okay. All right, uh, we have no old business, so we will get to the first item.
Okay, now my question is, that is the full amount that's the annual. Are we paying the annual amount upfront, or are we paying just the quarter like we
No, I'm sorry, we have two items where we get to take care of those.
usually do?
It'd be just quarterly.
I'll make a motion to a quarterly hours quarter, the number is either invoice 609-2101, Okay, yeah. On the invoice, it was a quarterly number.
Yeah, there was a quarterly number, but the $11,667.
the amount of $45,667 for the annual consulting fee. So it's just.
These are our math.
Yeah, the first, I think the first invoice of the year, they showed the total amount.
Okay, now my question is, that proposal now that's the annual, are we paying the annual
Right, but the total amount got picked up at the most, and.
amount upfront, or are we paying just the quarter like we usually do?
Oh.
It'd be just quarterly.
Marsha, do the annual, the full amount, and then change to, okay, very good. Okay, yeah. On the invoice, it was a quarterly number.
Yeah, there was a quarterly number, but the $11,667.
So it's just.
These are our math.
Yeah, the first, I think the first invoice of the year, they showed the total amount.
Uh, yes, we have a number. $11,000. Right, but the total amount got picked up at the most, and. Okay.
On the end of that. Oh.
Okay. Very good, okay. Marsha, do the annual, the full amount, and then change to, okay, very good. Any other comments? If not, one favor?
Aye.
Okay, yes. Okay, uh, I move to approve February 2021 single invoice for 06294, the amount of $400 Uh, yes, we have a number. $11,000. Okay.
On the end of that.
for Randy Dalton's benefit calculation. Okay. Very good, okay. Okay, any comments, questions? Any other comments? If not, one favor? Okay, one favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, yes. Okay. All right, um, I will make this motion, and then we will have discussion. Okay, uh, I move to approve February 2021 single invoice for 06294, the amount of $400 Motion to select Milliman as the town's pension and OPEB actuarial firm as a result of the for Randy Dalton's benefit calculation. RFP. 2021-04 proposal for pension of OPEB actuarial services and to authorize the manager to certify Okay, any comments, questions? Okay, one favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, um, I will make this motion, and then we will have discussion. your contract with Milliman.
Okay.
Motion to select Milliman as the town's pension and OPEB actuarial firm as a result of the All right. Good luck.
Yeah, uh, let me start off by saying that when, um, when I wrote that motion, it was
RFP. 2021-04 proposal for pension of OPEB actuarial services and to authorize the manager to
at the very beginning, so we could get off the process, so that we could get it on the agenda. Um, and this is why you go through proposals very carefully, so that you can find the,
certify your contract with Milliman.
Okay.
All right. Good luck.
uh, the differences, things that don't pop out at you right away, if I just saw, uh, Yeah, uh, let me start off by saying that when, um, when I wrote that motion, it was what used to be the, uh, the actual numbers. at the very beginning, so we could get off the process, so that we could get it on the Um, so, uh, we're not wedded to Milliman, I think that was the only one that brought agenda. Um, and this is why you go through proposals very carefully, so that you can find the, it up to begin with, uh, because they have a really good track record and they are very uh, the differences, things that don't pop out at you right away, if I just saw, uh, knowledgeable and, you know, uh, present, and they help you with your plan. what used to be the, uh, the actual numbers. Um, so I think after discussing, you might find that you want to go a little bit, so. Um, so, uh, we're not wedded to Milliman, I think that was the only one that brought
It always meant to be.
Exactly. Um, there were questions, thank you for the questions we received. it up to begin with, uh, because they have a really good track record and they are very Uh, the main question was, why did the proposal numbers not match the numbers in that spreadsheet? knowledgeable and, you know, uh, present, and they help you with your plan. Um, so I think after discussing, you might find that you want to go a little bit, so. Um, that compared all the numbers, and that's because, uh, Chris and Don and I went back
It always meant to be.
Exactly. and forth quite a bit with, uh, mostly with USI to get additional. Um, there were questions, thank you for the questions we received. Uh, the main question was, why did the proposal numbers not match the numbers in that spreadsheet? And, uh. Um, that compared all the numbers, and that's because, uh, Chris and Don and I went back and forth quite a bit with, uh, mostly with USI to get additional. And, uh.
Well, they don't have the depth in Connecticut, but they do have a number of municipal plans outside of Connecticut. That's a byproduct of a number of acquisitions that they've done over the years. So they do have a robust municipal practice, more so outside of Connecticut than here in the state.
Yes, yes, so they did provide references, which the finance director did reach out and get responses from. Town of Portland, which is a common client between us, my firm and USI. We've been working with Portland for over a decade. And a town of Rocky Hill was also another client that they provided as a reference. For your character and style.
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward. It's not uncommon for plan sponsors to change firms from time to time. If you look back at Segal, I think the impetus around maybe going to market has been somewhat of a fee. But we've had turnover on the account as well, and this is a relationship business. So it's a good idea to go to marketing and get some pricing. But at the end of the day, it's really a data fee that you give permission for Segal to work with either USI or Milliman. And the data comes over, so we see it multiple times, but no issues with that. So you wouldn't be really involved in that. There wouldn't be any heavy lifting on your part. It would be the interaction between Segal and USI. And then there may be a call or two as they go through the data, make sure they're not missing anything. And then just sort of go through the checks and balances that everything is in good order. But there's a kind of a checklist that they both work off of and to ensure that the data comes over pretty clean.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, they wouldn't charge you a fee for transitioning the data over.
So what you would probably want to do is if you were to award the business to Milliman or USI, what they would do is set up sort of a transition call to really address the questions that are being asked right now. You know, is the data going to be compromised? How do we know it's clean? Do you run sort of pre-couts and back into sort of the numbers? I think those are all good questions, and I think they would really flush out a transition schedule and what's included from an auditing perspective as part of that transition. But these are not uncommon. And again, if I think you look at your plan, it's fairly, as we would classify it, something like plain vanilla. It's not overly complex, where some other plans, you're transitioning over police plans and grandfather provisions, et cetera, et cetera. No, I think because you have two good organizations. One, your data is with Segal. If it was with a, maybe I would just get a small shop, a small TPA that maybe doesn't have the software or the technology, maybe I'd be a little bit more concerned about the integrity of that, et cetera. But you're with Segal, and they are a real professional firm, Milliman, the same with USIs. You've got resources, you've got system capability, so I'm not overly concerned. But again, it would be a transition call, and we would be glad to sit through that call as well to ask some questions or address any concerns that the town may have. And they would really put together this transition schedule, how that would flow over, how would they run some preliminary tests, scrub the data, make sure it can get pretty clean. And then what they would do is the new actuary, in my experience, I think in a town of Bloomfield, right? They were in a bundled solution at one point, achieving town of Farmington with Prudential. And Prudential was the actuary, and that was transitioned over to a different firm. And during that time, really, you actually sat down with the committee and started, the finance director, started going through some of the plan assumptions and looking at amortization schedule and saying, hey, look, these... And we think these are kind of off, if you looked at it this way. So it really is a good opportunity for another firm to step in and give kind of a new set of eyes in terms of some of the assumptions, et cetera. So I think I found those interactions, those engagements, pretty informative, where you get a new perspective on some of the assumptions that are being used today.
Yeah, and if I could add, this is Chris. Obviously, the team that would be assigned to the case is really an important aspect as well. So I don't think USI, given their costs of putting together a junior team, that's not the case. So I think we validated really kind of the strength of the team. But also our role, we have strong relationships, I think, with both firms and there's respect across the board. And so if there are issues, we're going to work on behalf of the town, even as your investment advisor, to get things in good order, to get it fixed. So I just wanted to point that out. So we view our partnership with the town of Leonard as more holistically, just not siloed to the investment portfolio, the investment services. We're here to help solve any issues that really come up with across your vendors. We were able to provide the finance director a template for the RFP search and provide some insight and assist with who we thought were some pretty good firms. Interested Hooker and Holcomb was another firm with a good deal of Connecticut representation. And they, for some reason, overlooked the RFP response and didn't respond. But I think you've got some good... I don't think you can go wrong with either firm, at the end of the day.
No, thank you. Thank you. And if I can, just for a moment, I know I had the committee together. I just wanted to give you a quick update. You're probably aware of sort of the market performance that we've had. We've had another strong first quarter, but through the end of February, the pension portfolio, the fiscal year return was about 18.2%. I suspect we're probably at around 19.5%, maybe 20% as we speak. So if we could just avoid... If we could just avoid any kind of dislocation, right? We've got about two and a half months, a little less than two and a half months to the end of the fiscal year. Putting in a return of that profile in the books would be really, really nice. Obviously, that gets amortized, but for example, a 20% return against your discount rate of around 6% or so, that'd be really nice. Yep. Yes, exactly. Yep, we'll have the first quarter investment review, and we'll probably have an April flash as well. So yes, next month we'll be going through the results. Yes, absolutely. We'll partner with you on the calls and work through a transition plan, absolutely. Yep. You're welcome. Thank you. All right, you too. Be safe, everyone. All right, you too, be safe, everyone.